Good evening. Tuesday, November 29. This is the second Capitol Project referendum presentation of the Reinbeck Middle School District. And at this point, we're going to turn the program over to Garrett Hamlin from Tetra Tech, who will give the presentation. A couple of us may move to the back so that we can get a better view of this point.
Yes, of course.
Good evening. I'm Garrett Hamlin, who's the senior architect here. I'm Principal Architect, Tetra Tech Architects and Engineers. We were hired by the district in 2015 to perform the district's mandated building condition survey for the state aid. We're here tonight to talk about a Capitol project that came as a result of that. I'd like to talk a little bit about the process that led the district to this moment. The building condition survey, as I said, is something that's mandated by SED, State Education Department, it's every five years. So, we were required to look at really everything throughout the district, top to bottom, give a snapshot of the condition of the facilities. And I'm happy to report that the district's doing a great job of taking care of things. So, what came out of this process is prioritizing long-term needs, a really long-range plan for the district. And as a result of that, we started having conversations about planning for a Capitol project. There are a number of things that the district's doing to maintain facilities and keep things up, but there are many, many things that are really Capitol project infrastructure improvements that are beyond the capabilities of the district and are also beyond the financing for the district's. And so Capitol projects allow districts to both get building aid for the work that's done, whereas if they were doing work by themselves alone, they wouldn't get building aid for it. So Capitol project planning is very important in terms of preparing for the long-range caring and maintenance of facilities. One of the things that the district did at the outset of this process is said that they really wanted to have an open and transparent process throughout the whole thing. So, there was a community task force that was put together ad hoc. And that was really an opportunity to start to share some of the thoughts that the district was prioritizing needs in the building and get some feedback from the community as to what made sense to potentially bring forth as a Capitol project. The result of that was a preparation for a Capitol Project referendum that's being voted on December 6th next week. And so, we're here tonight to talk a little bit about the scope of the project, some of the rationale, some of the financing, and also answering questions that people might have. So, I'm going to run through some of the images that I have here. Some of them will be backups for future questions that you might have, and then I'll specifically talk about the scope in detail as well. This is the aerial photograph of the Reinbeck Middle School, High School. And this is an enlargement of that showing the vintages of the buildings. And as you can see, this building is comprised of a number of additions, starting in 1950 and then another one right after in 1952. And so that really impacts how we understand caring for this building. It's not just one building that was all built at the same time. And so, parts are aging in different ways. Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, the same. Here's an aerial photograph of the site, and then a vintage breakout of this building too. Now, this building is mostly the 1966 original building. There were two additions done to it along the way. Both this building and the elementary school are relatively old buildings. They had some newer additions over the years, but they start their life in the 1950s and 1960s. So, we're dealing with infrastructure that is relatively old. The Capitol Project's scope itself can be thought of in really five broad areas: health, safety, security, roofs, windows, doors, and lighting, building infrastructure, educational space, and exterior fields and site work. There is no glitzy, amazing new addition or things that would be icing on the cake. This is really just maintaining the cake that's here and making sure that it will both serve teachers and students now and well into the future. I have two slides on the Capitol Project's scope. They're in all of the literature that the district has published, they're in the newsletter, they're on the website. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time and go through just listing off each of them. What I will do in a moment is go into some detail on some of the bigger picture, larger items. I have images of those and some slides that help us understand those. I want to just mention a couple of things that aren't in slides that are really important parts of the scope of the project. New phones at both buildings. Kitchens, upgrades at both buildings. Access control on the exterior of the buildings, that's card swipes. The systems that are in place now are really antiquated, and so upgrading that would be a good security improvement. Relieve air ducting in this building, and the upstairs addition on this facility, it heats up very hot, and so I'm adding some ducting to get some natural production going on and get the heat out of the building, which actually both improves thermal comfort but also improves energy use in the building. And then there's a small solar component as well. We are always looking for opportunities to both improve energy efficiency and also to see opportunities for green energy. So, we'll talk a little bit about solar along the way, I'm sure. There is a small component of solar that maximizes the agradable amount of solar that you can do in the district and get building aid for it. So, if we look at finances, and Tom Brunel's going to talk a little bit more about finances later in the presentation, I thought it would be helpful to just break out how these categories work in terms of the amounts of the projects. So, each of them has the totals here, they're also in the handout that you have. And then below it are construction subtotals and then the summaries of soft costs that get us to a $12,089,160 referendum amount. Now, one of the most important things to understand about the financing for school projects, and I have a lot of experience with school projects, my firm specializes in it, should have said this at the outset. Tetra Tech has been doing schools for about 50 years. I've been with the firm for 16 as a Principal Architect. The most important thing about Capitol projects in schools, not the most important, but one of the most important things, especially for the financing and towards the project, is maximizing state aid. That's the portion of the project that the state will contribute towards the project is very important. Tom will talk about that along the way, but what I want to say at the outset is that this project is predominantly completely agradable. And we've made some assumptions, or conservative assumptions, to allow the state to say, maybe not this or maybe not that, but in general, this is a fully agradable project. And so, that means that you're maximizing the aid that the state will pay towards this project. It's what, 36...
Thirty-six point eight percent.
So, that means that for every dollar that the district spends, 36.8 cents will be paid by the state. So, that's a really good incentive for districts to be doing Capitol project work as opposed to trying to do these things and doing these projects along the way. So, there are roofing. Let's start and go through a couple of scope items here. At the middle school, high school, majority of the roof is needing some repair. And so, the blue shaded area is a shingle roof that's aging and needs to be replaced. The tan area is a foam roof. It's actually a spray-on roof that was installed about 20 years ago. It's just coming out of warranty right now. So, the idea for this roof is to, instead of replacing the foam altogether, is actually to recode it. So, the district will do a thermal scan of that roof, determine what areas may or may not be wet. Those will be piled, and when the rest of the roof will be fully recoded. The benefit of approaching a roof this way is that it's leaving what's good there, so it's a very cost-effective way to increase the warranty back up to another 20 years for the roof. Couple of images of this. This is the shingle roof. If you look at the image on the right-hand side, the redder roof is the new roof on the front of the building, and the browner roof is the old roof that's scheduled for replacement. This is an image of the foam roof now. As I said, it's just about to end its warranty, and so this recoding will actually extend the warranty on top of that. Windows will be replaced actually at both schools. So, if we start by looking at the middle school, high school, you'll notice that the areas of red, which show where the windows are going to be replaced, are actually in the older portion of the building, so the 1950 and the 1952 wing. Here's an image of some of these windows, and the one on the right is especially dramatic from my standpoint. Those are single-pane steel windows, very inefficient. They're actually very architecturally interesting because they have very thin lines. Back in the day, that was what was working for them, but in today's world, they're not very comfortable, they're not very energy efficient. The windows on the wing in the back are aluminum windows that are later vintage, but they're also aging at the end of their useful life. So, replacing these windows both in this building, and then I'll also talk about Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, will do a lot for thermal comfort. It's amazing what a window replacement job can do for a building in terms of how people, especially the students and staff, feel in the classrooms every day. There's a lot of actually interesting research talking about improving buildings and especially improving thermal comfort and how it can impact positively student performance. And so, while I would hesitate to say that the window replacement is going to increase student performance, I would certainly say that it could help on that pathway. There are some skylights at Chancellor Livingston that are also aging and really in need of repair or replacement. I'll show an image of that in just a second. So, this is a second-floor plan. The windows on the left are being replaced in red, and then the blue are the skylights on the roof plan. So, here are some pictures of the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School curtain wall. It's floor-to-ceiling, if you will, so all of it will be replaced. And if you look at the left-hand image, that black line between the two windows is actually a gap in the windows. So, this is a 1966 vintage product, and it's served its life very well. The panels are starting to age, the glass is starting to age, and so this is really an important time to think about replacing those windows. This is an image of the skylights at Chancellor Livingston. You'll see that, again, they really served their useful life, but they're cracked and aging and need to be replaced. This, to me, highlights that this project is really an infrastructure preservation project, something that the district needs. It's not icing or flashy glitzy stuff at all, frankly. One of the things that's going to happen, assuming that the vote passes next week, is that a significant amount of the flooring in both, in this building, will be replaced. And so, some of its carpet, some of its harder surface, vinyl composite tile, some of it's actually asbestos, and that will all need to be taken care of under abating conditions. We've accounted for that in the budgeting. And so, here's upstairs. Here's some images of that. One of the things that you find, especially when you see vinyl asbestos tile, is to just have to care for it in a certain way. The pops, they have to deal with it. If they have to get through it for any reason, to drill holes in it, it's an issue. And so, by abating this and coming to a point where you have uniform flooring throughout the building, there'll both be really an aesthetic enhancement, a visual enhancement, but also an enhancement as well. There are a number of really, frankly, nuts and bolts kinds of items that need to be taken care of. This is one of the chimneys on this building. Has a significant crack that runs down through it. The scope item for this is to actually remove the chimney down to solid sound base and then build it back up again. It will look essentially like this again in the end, but just without the crack and disrepair. Ceiling replacements. There's some ceiling replacements scheduled for both buildings. And one of the things that we find is really important is to upgrade the ceilings in a way that matches what's going on in the school. And if you look around in both buildings, the ceiling tiles and the ceiling grids are aging, and they're really showing their age. This ceiling replacement scope item is directly related to a lighting replacement that's also scheduled for both buildings. So, if the project passes, the scope of the project is to replace the majority of the lighting throughout both buildings with new, energy-efficient LED lighting. So, that will both improve the aesthetics, the light quality, but will also reduce energy, which we think is a really good thing for the district. Acoustical treatments in the high school gym. This will help get the sound a little better under control. Science room upgrades. There's a science room here that will also get ceiling replacements and flooring replacements, but in this room, the cabinetry in the case will be replaced as well. This is dated science cabinetry. It's really served its useful life very well. It's durable stuff, but it's at the end of its useful life, so it'll be good to see that replaced. Placing corridor lockers here, the little ladder locker, which works a lot better for the students' backpacks. The lockers over at Chancellor Livingston are in better shape than these and those, so those are scheduled for actually refurbishment. So, Paul Harder will take them off, he'll do a full range job with those and then put them up together. So, really a cost-effective approach for dealing with lockers. When the lockers are good in the elementary school, they should stay, and it's time for replacement for these. Lintils, which is the structure over windows here at this building, are starting to corrode and rust, as you can see by this picture. That's lead paint there, so this scope item will actually allow for lead to be abated and steel to be primed and painted. There's no structural concern at this point, but it is the kind of thing, if it were left unintended, that it could become an issue down the road. There is some exterior work scheduled for the project as well. Some paving here at this school, some catch basin improvements, resurfacing the track and replacing the long jump as well are included in the project. Roof ladders on the roof. An elevator smoke guard. This is a safety enhancement that's important to the building to prohibit smoke from traveling from one floor to another in an unfortunate fire event. Recode the cupola. And then door replacements. So, a series of doors are going to be replaced and also hardware as well. This is really important from a security and safety standpoint. It's also important from the accessibility standpoint. If you notice in that photo, the one on the right has ADA compliant lever handles. The door on the left has a knob which doesn't need ADA. So, this scope item will allow the district to have a uniform lock throughout the interior of these buildings and also improve accessibility. So, we're to a point now where it would make sense to talk a little bit about finances. Tom, would you like to touch on that?
Not quite that tall, sorry. Please bear with me. Much better. Okay. Like I said, we broke this into five separate distinct categories up there, which has a total construction of about $8.15 million. But there's additional things that get added to it. Contingencies. The 15% cost escalation of 5%. The shovel will not go into the ground for another year and a half at the earliest, so anticipating a 5% increase on cost. An environmental allowance of $100,000. That would be if we find asbestos or some other type of environmental issue after we remove ceiling tiles and we find asbestos up there. We don't believe that's going to happen. We think that we've identified all asbestos, and most of it has been removed throughout the building. It's just really flooring and maybe some very minor places deep in the bowels that we don't need to work in. And then incidental expenses of almost $2 million and a capitalized interest of $150,000. We'll have to outlay interest on a bond anticipation note. We use the capitalized interest to get state aid back, which is nice to have, and we have a total project of just short of $12.1 million. So, if we go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about what's going on here. So, we are currently in the second year there, the year ending June 30th, 2017. Next year, we see a drop of $145,000. So, we're trying to coincide this with the drop on our debt service already existing. And then two years later, we have an additional almost $80,000 coming off our debt service. These are from previous projects that we refinanced them a couple of years ago to reduce our interest costs, but we still had to have things come due. If it was a 23-year bond, resident bond to begin with, I can't stretch that out any further. I can only go to 25. So, our bond counsel and our fiscal advisors, you know, both agree that this is the time if we're going to do a project, this is good as we're relieving some of that particular debt from the school district, that this will help offset this in the future. So, if we can go to the next slide, and this just visually shows it where we are right now, and what we're showing is the local share, not the total cost, okay? This is the local share, which means total cost less the state aid we receive back. So, this is the actual impact currently of our debt service, which is just short of $1.2 million. So, if you go across that line, you see that, and also we're seeing a drop-off in... So, this gives us a little bit of wiggle room to be able to help offset this project. Go to the next slide. Okay. So, what I did here, and you can get this on the website, we have a little calculator on our website, so you can figure out what the impact is to your particular home. And what we see here is what we call our median home. This is, we have about 6,000 residence homes, single-family homes in our district. This is the one that's right in the middle. So, our median assessment is 291,500. And of course, we'll come with a star exaction, that's your primary home. So, the tax assessment is $252,920. So, that's what our median is. And what I've done is to calculate out what our bond is, our estimated cost to it less the state aid that drives an estimated tax rate per thousand, which, you know, will start up a little bit higher, looking at $86.77, but then will drop throughout this particular one as we hit those retire-in debts as we go along. Overall, for the median home, would be an average annual tax impact of a little over $78. Yes?
Can you talk about state aid? Is this predicated on the 37% state...
Yes, yes, 36.1, yes, correct.
And where did you come up with that?
Oh, the state gives us our figures of exactly what our state aid ratios are. So, they're published every year. This has been our aid ratio for, I'm going to say, it's about 20 years now. So, those were kind of set in stone years ago because actually, our current billing aid ratio was zero. We're considered wealthy. And there's a lot of school districts across New York State that have zero state aid. But things got locked in many years ago, and the legislature could change it in the next budget cycle and make it down to zero, but if we have our vote now, we're locked in at 36.8. And that's the same year ago. If there's some infighting, who knows, they could change the legislation and say, let's go with the current billing aid ratio.
But that could change over the scope of 18 years.
No, no. You're locked into the billing aid ratio at the time of the vote. It does not change. It does not change. So, we don't have to worry about that. That could be a horrible toss throughout New York State because everybody's actually lower now than what it currently is being projected as. Now, there's a couple of other factors that aren't factored into this. There's new building going on, construction. Those additional properties will help offset this, so in reality, it should come in lower. This is if our assessments stay the same and don't change. But over the years, it has increased. I mean, we had a little bit of a household depression over a couple of years ago, but that's been recovered as far as that's concerned. We're back to normal levels. Other things that aren't factored in, we know we're going to get. We know our fuel usage will go down with the new windows. It's what a difference it makes from the... We replaced the windows in the front, and during the, we ran a little test during the middle of the winter time. It was about 5 degrees out at night, and the rooms that had the old windows, they called for heat six or seven times at night, while the new windows never even called for heat. It held its, and it didn't go on until 6 o'clock in the morning, when they're supposed to go on. That's when it raised the temperature up. So, we figured that there's quite a bit of savings there. We just don't know exactly what it is, and we don't want to project that. And it's the same thing with the LED lighting. We know there's a huge energy, there's a couple of savings there. First of all, the use of electricity. And the other thing is going to be the maintenance of them. LED lights last longer than these fluorescent bulbs and, I think we could use a T-Ford or something of that nature, but, you know, big, less maintenance. They should go up, and we should not have to get up there to repair them, so the maintenance men can continue working on other projects as opposed to spending time doing that.
How are these buildings heated?
Fueling. They're fuel oil on both buildings. Right now, we're enjoying the low rates. How long they last is hard to tell, but right now, we're enjoying those low rates, which all school districts at homeowners are enjoying that part who are on fuel oil. Any other questions on the financing?
These dental expenses of $1.9 million, what comprises that?
Well, Garrett's going to do a better job than I am.
That's a pretty big number.
So, we budgeted 20% for incidentals, and that's actually a modest budget compared to other budgets that we set up, but we know that we're not going to need a lot of furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So, instead of the standard 25, which we typically use, we're at 20%. That's going to cover costs, professional costs, so bar fees, architects, engineers, construction manager, labor, observing construction day-to-day, your lawyers, your bond counsel, those fees testing. There will be some asbestos testing that needs to be done before the project. There will be monitoring that needs to be done during the project or in construction. The incidental budget will cover all of those costs. So, we have a project here, this is, we're at the end of the formal presentation. We have a project here that's infrastructure-related. It's very basic needs of the buildings. It's financially sound, frankly. Seeing the debt drop and then adding the state aid into it really makes for a great scenario in terms of affordability of all this work. And we're here to answer questions. What questions can we answer?
So, you don't have any questions, conservatively it looks like. What happens if things work out in best-case scenario, which they do, but what happens if they work out in the best-case scenario and there's money left over that was still on it?
So, first of all, you're exactly right. We budgeted conservatively because we want to make sure that the promises that are made as part of the scope are achievable. That's very important. As Tom mentioned, it's far out into the future before we'll start to see construction. So, you know, we're going to see some cost escalation. Is it going to be 5%? We think that's a pretty good estimate. In a wonderful world where you see bids come in lower than you expect and there's money left over in the project, the district has a couple of options to do. They can not spend that money, they can reduce everything by that amount, or they can use that towards potentially other items of infrastructure repair that are needed, that fit within the general scope of the project. That's typically what we see. We do, we are enjoying a bid market that's still relatively competitive. It's hard to say what it's going to be like in a year or so, but if we saw a good bid market and saw prices come in well, once you get through construction, then you'd be at a point where you'd make decisions like that. And let me tell you, there are plenty of other things that were on the priority-two list that are not being proposed at this point because frankly, the cost for the project was a real important balance for how big of a project this could be. So, Tom, would you like to add something?
Yeah. What I'd like to discuss is what happened at the end of last project. We didn't spend all the money, okay? So, money was, we didn't spend it all. And also, at the same time too, it was in a lot better financial market where we were earning quite a bit of interest. And in the end, we had about, I'd say about $1 million. That was at the end. And the board has elected to use that to reduce taxes. So, every year for the past couple of years, we've reduced the tax levy by $120,000. So every year, for the past couple of years, we've reduced the tax levy by $120,000 using those monies. We're going to start weaning ourselves off of that because we're about halfway through that money now. We're going to start cutting it back a little bit, but you can't use that money for anything else other than reducing the debt or doing other projects within the scope of the project. I can't all of a sudden say, oh, I got a million dollars left over. What are we going to build now? Oh, let's build playgrounds. No, you can't do that, because that's not part of the scope of the project, unless we write it into the scope, which is something, but you can't, because what happens is the state will look, these were going to be addendums to it, and they're going to look at it and say, hmm, this doesn't correspond with what this project is, and they'll say, no, you can't do that. Or they won't give you state, you can still do it, but they're not going to give you aid on it. So, and that's something we always look at, you know, we always want it to be able. We know one or two things won't be. They'll say, oh, that's ordinary maintenance. But for the most part, this is not ordinary maintenance. I think the only thing that might be considered ordinary maintenance would be spray coating the track. But we're doing improvements to it too, so, you know, that's about the only thing that I can think of that, they might question us about being, yeah, they may not be, they may call that ordinary maintenance. Yes?
And a different thing, as far as how long the project will take, what will happen, what will be impacted in terms of usable space and?
I'll leave that up to you. No more.
So these are very lengthy process projects. The process is long. If there's a successful one this summer, it'll take a good six months for design to happen. We'll submit to SED. SED's review times have been historically very long in recent past, and they are getting shorter. I actually did have a meeting today with Roseanne Groff, who's heading up the department now, and they're working towards getting review times down, which will be helpful. We're anticipating that it could be about six months for SED review. That's an appropriate length of time. So we'd see construction start in 2018. The bulk of the construction in this project's going to happen during the summer, so it will happen in the summer of 2018 and then the summer of '19 as well. This kind of project, there might be some things that happen during the school year that would have to happen off-hours, separated from the students. Really, the goal here is to have construction have as minimal an impact on the students and the staff as possible, so concentrated during the summer on the maybe some things during the school year which would fit on schedule. Go ahead.
Back to the science room cabinetry. Kate, tell us a little bit more about what the new cabinetry, I mean, how is it different? What's wrong with it?
So the cabinetry there is just, it's old at this point, and so drawers don't work as well, doors don't work as well. So this would be a one-for-one replacement. Could allow for an opportunity for reconfiguration if the administration and the teachers wanted that, we could certainly realign the cabinetry in other ways. So it would really just be a one-for-one replacement of the old cabinetry counters.
Yeah, just to note that that is the only lab in this district that has remained untouched. It's 1950's vintage laboratory. There's also asbestos tiles in that room, so the best time is when you can take all the stuff out of the room, including the cabinetry that's bolted to the floor, get the asbestos tiles out of there, put new non-asbestos tiles in there, and then put new cabinets back, and that's just a good time. You don't have to pull those things out of the room anyway to take the tiles out, so given the age of those cabinets, and they're, again, they're 50's vintage furniture, think about it, you know, and these are fine antiques. I mean, they've been in high school, they've taken a lot of good, but hard use over the last quite a few years, so that room, all of our labs, are up to pretty good, pretty good shape. The other item too is during the last project, we created a brand-new chemistry lab just over here. This is the old chemistry lab, which is now a physics room, so it's not even appropriate, you know, for a physics lab. So we'd be ridding rid of gas outlets that are going into there as a chemistry lab. We'll be changing that function from a chemistry lab to a physics lab too, as is part of that.
So there will be some functionality added that is appropriate to physics cabinetry?
Yes. We have a new physics lab now as a part of the last project, so.
Yeah. Physics labs, a lot of them is needed space to do experiments, bigger things, movements, those kinds of things, and also storage as well. I'd like to come back to your question about impact on students during construction. The one other thing that's part of this project is some site work, and so the fields will be upgraded, a number of them are all detailed in the list, but the fields that are getting worked on are going to need to be phasing that work, because those fields will be out of commission for at least two seasons, sort of two years as it goes along. So that's a real impact, but it's something that certainly can be managed along the way. It's doable, but it's just something that people just have to understand it's going to be part of the project.
Can you tell us something about the solar component?
Oh, yeah.
Capacity and stuff.
So we like to do as much solar as possible. We also want to make sure that the work of the project is aided by SED. So SED at this point aids solar projects that are 10 kilowatts, so it's a very small amount of solar. So that's why the solar that's proposed as a 10-kilowatt demonstration project. In some districts where electric rates are very high, for instance, down on Long Island where they're, you know, 10, 12, 13, 14 cents a kilowatt hour, that can make the solar pay for itself and be justified. In this situation, when we see attractive electricity rates, it just doesn't pay for itself to do more solar than that. Certainly, if electricity goes up or if solar costs go down, or especially if efficiency of solar panels goes up, and that's a big thing, solar panels are about 25, 30% efficient right now, once the technology improves, if they can get to a higher efficiency rate, and then it would make sense to really consider SEDs and solar here. We've done projects that are large solar arrays, it's just, it's not feasible here based on the rate circle on that. What else? Did we answer any questions? The one thing I'd like to end with is, I do a lot of work with schools. Red Hook, Rideback, New Pauls is one of my partners' projects over the years, and the hallmark of a successful project is an open process, a transparent process, and this district really did that along the way. Some districts kind of just do their own thing, and the administration and the board are really very intentional about being open and out of the way, including people being early on it, and so I think that that's just a great hallmark, and it's something that I like to remind people, is it's, you know, you don't want people to think, oh, this is a rush deal at all. It isn't, no, it ain't happening. Okay? Good. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, and since I'm a teacher, I do quality efficiency things, and I help the kids to concentrate on school and school operations and.
It was talked about as part of the structure.
Can you consider solar shingles when you're doing all these adjustments to roofing and stuff?
Yeah, again, it's a possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you should have any questions, feel free to call the district office or email. Also, it's an opportunity, if people would like a tour to see anything firsthand, welcome to call the district office and we'll get that arranged for you.
You can stay.
Well, stay for the one action.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Goodnight.